It is 7:15. We will reconvene this meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We have been in closed session under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, and no action was taken. Welcome. Thank you all for being here this evening. I cannot tell you how much we appreciate your interest and support of the Waco Public Schools. Everything we take action on tonight has been posted in accordance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act. I would ask if you have a cellphone or other electronic device with you that you put it on silence at this time, and I would remind you that it's the board's purpose to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals, as management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. Once again, thank you for being here tonight. Welcome. Welcome anybody who's at home watching on Channel 17. I would ask at this moment that you join us for a moment of silence as we pause for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation. Thank you. We will move on to Item 6, Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Kane?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we're pleased to have outstanding students from Indian Spring Middle School to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please welcome Hannah Chu, Daniel Vera Cruz, Ranesea Ward, Carolina Donnell, and Cesar Donnell.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students. Board members, please join me in front of the dais for tonight's recognition. We are pleased to recognize tonight's Pledge of Allegiance leaders, all of whom will be attending Indian Spring Middle School this coming school year. It is important to note that all of these students have been attending the Bulldog Ambassador Camp this summer. Bulldog Ambassador Camp is one of three summer programs featured at Indian Spring as the school continues to identify, develop, and depend on student leaders at all three grade levels, sixth, seventh, and eighth. Hannah Chu will be a seventh grader this year. Her favorite subject is math, and her favorite hobby is singing. Someday, Heather would like to become a nurse and work at WISD, we hope.[203.48][203.48](Laughter) Ranesea Ward will be a sixth grader this year. She looks forward to being a middle school student after having been an outstanding student at Providence Heights. Her favorite subject is reading. Her favorite pastime is drawing. Ranesea wants to go to college to be a cartoon artist. Carolina Donnell will be a seventh grader this year. Her favorite school subject is math. In her free time, she also enjoys drawing, and Carolina someday wants to be a teacher at WISD, we hope.[245.12][245.12](Laughter) Yeah, Ms. Botelho, if you would get a job application there, we're going to start our recruiting program. Cesar Donnell will also be a seventh grader this year with his twin sister. His favorite school subject is writing. Cesar also enjoys technology, and he wants to become a computer technology person, so... And Daniel Vera Cruz will be an eighth grader this year. His favorite subject is math, and when he's able to, Daniel enjoys playing soccer, and someday, he wants to become a veterinarian. In addition to receiving certificates and goodies, the students, in honor of their commitment this summer, are receiving a coupon to take to their principal, Dr. John Jenkins. The coupon is good for a $50 purchase order to be used at the principal's discretion. We'd also like to recognize the work of after-school coordinator Katina Bryant for organizing the ISMS Summer Camps. Students, thank you for attending camp this summer to become a Bulldog Ambassador for Indian Spring Middle School.[315.14][315.14](Applause)
Thank you, Dr. Kane. I want to thank all the students from Indian Spring who came out this evening, and I was just telling Mr. Kathy, I saw an interview about the Bulldog Camp that took place on a tennis court. Right now, it's on WISD TV. It's also on the website. If you've not seen that, I would encourage you to go see it, because what they're doing this summer in terms of identifying and developing leaders is really special, and congratulations to all of you who've been able to participate in that. I will also let you know, you are more than welcome to stay till the end of the meeting if you want to, but you don't have to. If you'd like to leave at this point, you are excused, or you're welcome to stay, whatever you'd like to do. All right? All right. We will move on to audience for guests, and no one has signed up this evening, correct? Then we're to Item 9, the Consent Agenda. I have not been notified of anybody wanting to pull anything. Is there anything anyone wants pulled from the consent agenda? All right, well then, I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Do you have something to pull, Alan?
Yeah, I'll recuse myself on item M.
You won't pull that mic? I didn't hear which...
Mic.
M?
Sorry, yeah.
Got it. All right. Well, then I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of Item M.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Dupuy. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll now take up Item 9M, and Alan, you don't have any questions. You just won't be able to recuse from the vote.
Correct.
All right, then I will entertain a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to execute a bank contract agreement with Extraco. Thank you, Mr. Dupuy. We're kind of shorthanded. You guys are going to have to speak up.
Girls, second.[460.24][460.24](Laughter)
There a second? All right. Any questions, comments?
A revolution would be more interesting, but I guess we're...
It will have to be a resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and again, if you have the minutes reflect that Mr. Sykes abstained. And I'm sorry, probably should have taken this up at the top and gone out of order, but we'll move on to Item 10A, Hiring of Administrators. Dr. Kane?
Yes, sir. A few months ago, the board voted to hire Dr. Grace Navarro Perez Benson as the new Director of Bilingual and ESL Programs. I'd like to formally introduce Dr. Benson, as she brings a wealth of bilingual education experience to Waco ISD. Dr. Benson, would you say a few words, please?
First of all, I'd like to thank the board, Dr. Kane, and Ms. Ellis for the opportunity to be able to serve this wonderful community of Waco and the students and families in the community. I would like to extend a warm welcome for the families of the students that we serve to visit our bilingual education office. We love to visit with the families and share all the wonderful services that we provide for all of our students. Estimados estudiantes y familias, es un gran placer poder servir a la comunidad de Waco, y los quiero invitar a visitar nuestra oficina de educación bilingüe, para que puedan aprender de todos los servicios que ofrecemos. Estamos aquí para servirlos.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
The resignation of Keith Hannah, who accepted the principal position at Hillsborough ISD, left a vacant principal position at Brazos High Credit Recovery Center. We're excited to announce the reassignment of Mr. Larry Hawkins to this position. Mr. Hawkins previously served as the Principal of Wally Opportunity Center. Mr. Hawkins brings a wealth of administrative experience to the table in his former roles as superintendent, principal, and teacher. This left a vacancy at Wally Opportunity Center, so I have reassigned Mr. Jerry Johnson as the new principal of the Wally Opportunity Center. So I would just like to make this announcement since it's a reassignment. Mr. Johnson, if you'd stand up. Jerry Paul Johnson. Mr. Johnson has been in education for 32 years. Before moving into administration, he taught health and physical education and coached at all levels from elementary to high school. He served as an assistant principal at La Vega High School, Carver Academy, and Temple High School. He currently serves as an assistant principal at Waco High. He got his master's degree from Tarleton and his bachelor's degree from Baylor. He's got a principal certificate at all levels of physical education in his PDOS. He's a member of the Baylor Letterman's Association, the Baylor Alumni Association, Texas Classroom Teachers. He's married to Dr. Carrie Ann Johnson. In his leisure time, he enjoys reading, cooking, and playing golf, and especially enjoys spending time with his three-year-old grandson Gavin. Do you have your family here, sir? Would you introduce them, ask them to stand up?
(Inaudible).
Pleasure to meet you. Thank you. Hey, his time, you've been seeing him a lot after Congratulations and welcome aboard, sir.[668.62][668.62](Applause)
Now, the rest of these, I see some of the folks sitting out here, and you may not want to clap whenever she says your name, because we haven't voted on the rest of these yet.
Right, right.
You may want to make sure you pass.
Okay. For the, I'm recommending for the academic advisor coordinator at University High School, Isabel Lozano. Ms. Lozano has worked for Waco ISD for 21 years. There she is. She looks, she looks very familiar. Her sister. She's worked here for 21 years. Before becoming an instructional specialist at University High School, she taught at AJ Moore Academy and at University High School. Prior to teaching, Ms. Lozano worked four years in the bilingual ESL department and 11 years in the human resources department. Her bachelor's degree is from Tarleton, and her, as well as her master's degree. She is married and has three children, John, Diego, and Isabella. In her leisure time, she likes to spend time with her family and friends. She also enjoys visiting her father in Oaxaca, Mexico.
Oh, right.
Volunteering at church, traveling, and reading educational journals. Do you have family here?
Oh, my God.[745.82][745.82](Laughter)
Go ahead, introduce them.
The north side of the building.[749.94][749.94](Laughter) Well, just ask them to stand up. Okay.
Wow.
Oh, wow. I bet family reunions are great if you're out. Okay, and we'll be bringing your name in just a moment before the board.
No pressure on the board, but I dare you to both know with that many people sitting over there.
That's why I had them stand up. And I'd also like to introduce Ronnie Massey, Mr. Massey. We're recommending him as the Dean of Instruction for University High School. Mr. Massey has been in education for 15 years. Before moving into administration, he taught English, and English is a second language. He served as an assistant principal at Brabham?
Brabham.
Brabham Middle School in the Willis Independent School District before accepting the position, hopefully, as Dean of Instruction at University High School. He got his bachelor's and master's degree in, from Sam Houston State in Huntsville. In his leisure time, he enjoys spending time with his wife and six-year-old daughter. He also enjoys church activities and outdoor activities. Is your, did you have family here, or are you still traveling between places?
I'm still traveling. My family's actually Taiwanese.
Oh, wow.
They're on vacation.
And left you here?[834.04][834.04](Laughter) You're a very understanding man. Oh, y'all going to Taiwan. I was thinking, you're going to the board meeting.[841.24][841.24](Laughter) Okay, we'll be taking your name before the board in just a moment.[846.94][846.94](Applause) Well, Robin can stand up with, Robin, stand up with him. Okay, there you go. And we will also be, I think we may have competition for size of family over here. We're bringing the name to the board of Mr. Derek Smith, who has been in education for seven years, five in Waco ISD and two with the Rapid Por Academy. He has served in various positions such as physical education teacher, head boys athletic coach, dean of students, and most recently, behavioral specialist at Carver Middle School prior to accepting the position of assistant principal for Waco High. Mr. Smith got his bachelor's and master's from Tarleton, and he has two children, Alonso and Camille. In his leisure time, he enjoys spending time with his family, working out, and traveling. Whenever possible, you travel. So, would you, is your family here?
Uh, well.
Oh, well, congratulations, and thank you for being here.[908.12][908.12](Applause) I'd also like to present to the board for recommendation Ms. Desiree Hardeman. Ms. Hardeman has been in education for 10 years, all of which were proudly served in Waco ISD. Before moving into administration, she had the pleasure to teach in elementary school for seven years. She served as secondary content specialist in the ELL Department for three years prior to accepting the position of assistant principal at Indian Spring Middle School. She has an Associate of Arts degree from Los Angeles City College in California, Bachelor of Arts in Psychology from California State University in Los Angeles, a Master's Degree in Education from, in Teacher Leadership from Lamar University in Beaumont, principal certificate from Lamar University in Beaumont, and her doctorate in Lamar University. So, Dr. Hardeman, in her leisure time, enjoys spending time with her family, especially her sweet granddaughter Alexis. She is also active in the church and community, currently serving as the Leadership Plenty Facilitator, and is a member of the Prosper Waco Financial Steering Committee. Do you have family with you, Dr. Hardeman? Please stand up.
(Inaudible).
She's still working on it.
Okay. Welcome, and we'll be taking your name to the board in just a few minutes, and thank you, sir, for being here as well.
Thank you very much.[991.84][991.84](Applause)
And last, but certainly not least, we, I will be bringing to the board the name of Ashley Duncan for our assistant principal at Parkdale Elementary. Ms. Duncan has been in education for nine years. She served as an elementary GT Cluster teacher in Colleen ISD and has served as an instructional specialist for Advanced Academics in Waco ISD for the last two years. She has a Bachelor's of Science degree in Applied Sociology from Texas State University in San Marcos, and a Master's of Education degree from Concordia University in Austin. In her leisure time, she enjoys spending time with her family, husband Sam and two children, Bryn Lee and Grayson. She especially enjoys loading up the camper and going on weekend trips around central Texas. So, do you have your fam, any family with you?
(Inaudible).
A bedtime, okay. Well, we welcome you, and we'll be taking your name to the board in about two seconds. So, Mr. President, I am recommending that the Board of Trustees approve the employment of the named and introduced candidates for the administrative positions as presented.
All right. Unless I hear an objection, we'll vote on all of them at one time. So I'll entertain a motion to adopt the administration's recommendation. Thank you, Ms. Teakels, in the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Everybody's moving much faster now. Any questions, comments, discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Folks, welcome and congratulations.[1092.32][1092.32](Applause) Actually, I said, welcome, congratulations, and thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for agreeing to share your time and talent
Absolutely.
with our students here in Waco ISD. So, is that it? Dr. Kane?
Yes.
All right. We'll move on to reports and discussions. Item 11A, Community Loan Center.
Yes, sir. The concept of community loan centers was first brought to the April Intergovernmental Meeting, and an overview of the program will be presented tonight for the school board. And so I'd like to present Mr. Matt Hull. Mr. Hull?
Thank you, Superintendent Kane, members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Matt Hull. Let me figure out which button, oh, here we go, found the clicker. Actually works. I am the administrator of a small nonprofit loan fund based out of Austin, Texas called the Community, Texas Community Capital. We're part of the Texas Association of Community Development Corporations, which is another nonprofit trade association in Austin, Texas, that represents the interest of nonprofit affordable housing providers and community development financial institutions across the state of Texas. Many years ago, we became very concerned with the prevalence of payday and auto title lending in Texas. We see payday lending as an effort to strip assets out of communities and to negatively impact the lowest-income Texans across the state, and so some of our members have endeavored to create a product to help combat that locally, and want to talk to you about that tonight. In Texas, payday lending is pretty much an unregulated industry. It's overseen by the Office of Consumer Credit Commissioner with very few regulations. Texas is a profit center for payday lenders across the nation. 60% of the profits derived nationally in payday lending originate here in Texas. In Texas, it is a $6 billion a year industry with $1.5 billion in fees and interest being stripped away from low-income Texans. You can see from the chart, Texas charges higher interest rates than any other state in the country, with the possible exception of Mississippi, depending on who's in charge in Mississippi at the current time. Our average APR on a payday loan right now is between 450% and 650%, just depending on who's calculating it. With the O triple C, the state of Texas is calculating that, coming in at right at $650, oh, 660%. What that means, though, is that when you actually look at the terms, they don't look that bad at times. The typical fee is $23 on every $100 borrowed. So if you took out a $400 payday loan today, at your next paycheck, which is typically going to be 14 to 21 days away, you would owe them roughly $500. If you're not able to repay that, they'll be happy to refinance that loan, charge you additional fees. In Texas, right now, there's 44,000 cars being repossessed annually. Equates to about 850 cars being repossessed a week in Texas, away from people who couldn't afford to pay their payday loan off. We work with a number of social service organizations around the state, including Catholic Charities, and according to some of their survey work, they've done, when they do intake of their clients, 32% of the clients that they see that come to them for assistance are there because they have trouble with a payday loan, so. And how does this look in Waco? Right now, there's 36 payday and auto title lenders in Waco. It's a $10 million a year industry. That's just in the fees that are being charged, and every year in Waco, almost 700 cars are repossessed from, from people who need those to get to work. So, there we go. So, what do we have that we've created to address this issue? We went into this thinking that as nonprofits, most nonprofit programs usually have subsidy attached to them, usually require ongoing subsidy to keep them going. We wanted to look at a slightly different model, so we've created a model that we think is a market-based approach. It competes directly with the payday lenders, and it's sustainable and scalable. It's sustainable for us in the sense that it generates a little bit of revenue to help pay for the program. It's scalable so that we can start it here on a small scale, but continue to grow it as we bring on new employers. We can grow it across the state. Currently, right now, we're in three markets, and we'll be in seven markets by the end of the year. We want, we'd like Waco to be one of those. So, what does it look like? It's employer-based. We don't have a storefront. Our program operates by recruiting employers and then marketing to those employees, offering them loans at a reasonable rate. Improved efficiencies, everything is done online. The employee would apply for the loan online. That would generate an email that gets sent back to the employer to verify employment. Once they do that, we wire money electronically into the borrower's bank account, and the employer guarantees to set up payroll deduction to help pay that loan back every pay period. So it's nonprofit-driven. We can accept program-related investments. We can take social investments, and we can take grants from banks, foundations, et cetera. So, what exactly does the Community Loan Center term look like? It's a maximum $1,000 loan, or if the employee earns less than $2,000 a month, it's half of whatever that gross pay is. It's at an 18% interest rate with a $20 origination fee. It puts the APR just shy of 22%, which is roughly the equivalent of a cash advance APR on a credit card. The relaxed underwriting, we really don't underwrite the borrower. What we look for is, have they been at that employer that signed up for more than three months, or the 18 years of age and older? Do they have a banking account where we can deposit money? Do they have a photo ID that's tied to that banking account? We really look to the employer to underwrite them to see what their turnover rates are. No collateral. There's no prepayment penalties. It's a one-year term, but they can pay it off whenever they need to. We do report to the credit bureau, so it builds credit as they pay off the loan. It also would hurt their credit if they decide to default or become delinquent. On a $1,000 loan with one-year term, depending on if they're paid weekly or monthly, if they're paid weekly, it's roughly $24 a week, and payments that come back to us. If it's monthly, it's $96. So, how do we compare to a traditional payday loan? Typical payday loans in the state of Texas are refinanced two and a half times. So on a $300, on a $1,000 loan, at the end of, at your next pay period, you would owe us $122? Oh, I'm sorry, you would owe us $96 versus a payday loan. You would owe them the full principal plus the fees and interest. You would owe them $1,300. If you're not able to pay that off, they'll refinance it and tack on fees. Compared to a typical payday loan, compared to a Community Loan Center loan, we're saving borrowers $778 per loan. So, what are the benefits to the employers? Those of us, not those of us, because I'm certainly not in this field, but those who work in human resources tend to talk about something called absenteeism, but now there's something coming along that they're starting to talk about called presenteeism, where people are actually on the work site. They're working, but they're really not mentally there. They're not being as productive as they are. Two reasons that cause the highest rates of presenteeism, one is divorce. Sorry, we can't do anything about that. The other is financial stress in the workplace. People who are dealing with creditors, people who are dealing with collection agencies, they're not as productive in the workforce as what they could be. We think that our, that our program helps address that. Oh, I'm sorry, and last thing is, there's no direct cost to the, to the employers at all. So it's, doesn't cost anything to join, fully automated. All that we ask is that the employer verify employment and set up payroll deduction to pay off the loan. So, you might be thinking, who are we? Which would be a very fair question. This program is, was set up and owned by an organization in Brownsville, Texas called the Rio Grande Valley Multibank. They're a U.S. Treasury-certified community development financial institution. They're a multibank, so they're made up of nine bank investors from across the country. They actually own it, and they are the franchisor of the product. We are their sub-franchisor at Texas Community Capital. Our role, we are a 10-year-old, 11-year-old now, community loan center. We, we offer small loans to nonprofits, usually in the world of affordable housing, and this is a new product line for us. And then, the Heart of Texas Goodwill is looking to be our local lender. They will, I think their board is deciding tomorrow whether to join or not. It will take them about a year, if they decide to join, to be able to make these loans on their own, because they have to be licensed by the state of Texas. Texas Community Capital, we're already licensed. We've offered to come in and work with them and be the lender immediately in, in that year-long process where they're becoming a licensed lender. And then when they're ready to take over, we'll just transfer the operations over to them. They work in a 20-county area. They're headquartered here in Waco. So, heads at work, Rio Grande Valley Multibank, CDFI, they administer the loan fund. All of the local lenders contract back to them for loan funding and for loan servicing. They license the software and the technology to my organization. We go out, we recruit local lenders in different markets around the state and train them on how to use it. We're also a local lender where we don't have another lender already set up. We all brand ourselves under the same name, the Community Loan Center of the Heart of Texas, or the Community Loan Center of Dallas, Community Loan Center of Austin, et cetera. And then the local lender goes out, recruits employers, markets to those employees, and raises the loan capital to, to fund the loans, and then they collect the interest and the fees on the loan as it's being repaid. So, what we're asking Waco ISD to do is to consider joining the Community Loan Center as an employer, and to be able to offer this loan at no cost to your employees. We would come in, if you agree to do that, we would come in, talk to your employees, do marketing. If and when they needed a loan, they would go on our website, apply for the loan, and then again, that would trigger an employment verification email to come back to Waco ISD. And then, so once you agree, we would just come in, start training your staff on the software. We would need to sign an MOU, et cetera, and then when you're ready for us to start marketing the program, we, we would. We'll just skip that slide. Whoops, let's go back to this. So, how have we done so far? The program started in earnest in October of 2011. In the first year, the Rio Grande Valley Multibank did right at 800 loans. To date, we are now lending in Bryan College Station in a 10-county area in the Brazos Valley, as well as in Dallas. Our largest employer right now is the city of Dallas with 13,000 employees. We've done over 500, 5,500 loans to date, and we are active at 68, low right now. It's actually at 72 employers. We have just over 29,000 employees that are eligible borrowers. Of the 5,500 loans, we've lent out just over $5 million, and we've saved our borrowers over $3 million compared to a traditional payday loan. And our loan loss right now is, it's 3, 3.6 right now, so it's below 4%. The employer is not on the hook for the loans. The employer is not on the hook for the loans. You're not the lender. We're the lender, so any defaults come back to us as the lender. So there's no financial obligation of the employers whatsoever. Whoops, there we go. And so, having a little trouble. So again, the system is all online. There's an online application. We manage everything online as well. All we're asking to be able to do is to offer this product to your employees. So, and with that, I think I'll stop. The rest is just some of the marketing material and my contact information. Happy to answer any questions that you would have at this time.
Mr. Hall, thank you. Other questions?
I'd just like to say, Mr. President, that we are working so closely with Prosper Waco on, because the presence you're talking about also applies to our parents.
Thank you, sir.
They're not really present, working, if they're worried about loans, but they're also not the kind of parents they need to be if they're preoccupied with that as well. And I would like to encourage the board to look at this as, at something we can do to, again, work with our parents to get them out of that spiral of poverty, break that cycle of poverty, and for us to see what we can do to do that for our employees slash parents, in many cases.
Thank you, Dr. King. Other questions, comments?
One quick one.
Yes, sir.
If you'll pull the mic towards you.
You've been kind of shy tonight.
Are there other school districts that you are working with currently?
The, in Brownsville, Texas, yes. I believe the Brownsville ISD and maybe the Port Isabel ISD, I believe, have signed up. Lefaria ISD has signed up, and there may be one or two others, but...
Who was the first one you said?
Brownsville.
Brownsville ISD. I believe they've signed up.
Yeah, a high-poverty district.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Cordway?
Thank you so much. I am so loud in this microphone. The one question that I did have was, I noticed that you said that you guys have financial counseling on there. Is that with each person that goes through, so you can show them? Is it like a literacy piece, financial literacy piece, or is it just a counseling if they get in trouble, they need help? How does that piece work?
Right, and that's really up to the local lender, and so we do not require financial counseling as, to get the loan. What happens is, if someone applies for the loan, if they're successfully funded, we approach them after the fact and say, hey, you know, you took out a Community Loan Center loan, congratulations. Please be advised that you have at no cost access to free financial counseling through one of our local partners. And so, we would be working with Goodwill Industries to provide that, or one of the other local partners, a CCS or a United Way.
Okay.
So that would be available to every borrower, but it's not a condition for the making of the loan?
It's not a condition. We can't make it a condition of the loan. That's not legal, and it's not good business sense either. If you, the more barriers you put in front of someone to getting access to a loan, they're just going to go the easiest route and go to the payday lending route.
Other questions, comments?
I have one more question.
Sure, please.
Have you noticed, what have you noticed the trend for payday loans in cities that have adopted this kind of model, and how do you guys come in?
So right now, it's, this is only available in three markets, so our experience is limited. We have, we've only done 6,000 loans. Payday lending is a $6 billion industry. We are barely scratching the margin right now, because we're still very new. I would say that for the people who we have assisted, we're having a very dramatic impact in their lives, but we're not able to assist a lot of people at this time. This is a very new product. It's growing. It's growing here in Texas and also in other states as well. So is the question, are we having a detrimental impact on the payday lending industry? Not yet, so.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
You know, along those lines, I'm sorry. The, I know you're a nonprofit, but are you able, can you grow assets?
Yes.
Quickly enough?
Oh.
Or are you entirely dependent upon grant funding for expansion or charity or...
No, the program generates eighteen percent interest. There's, it's a very low-margin industry. So we're able to take on debt capital as well, typically at a subsidized rate, to be able to use that to revolve it and expand the program.
Okay, okay. So you're not starved for capital, it's just you're...
That's true. That's correct.
You've got money to lend, you're looking for markets.
Exactly.
Okay. And then, for the staff, I guess, have you all made some sort of assessment about what it'd take on our part to...
Actually, if you recall, you and I were the only ones at that intergovernmental meeting. Mr. Atkins couldn't be there that day. So we, I felt like it would be, the board needed to hear it first and give us the nod to ask Ms. Davis if she would look at the pros and cons and, from the, and also Ms. Boteo as far as, from the HR perspective, and then come back and make a recommendation to the board.
Other questions?
No, I just want to say, two weeks ago, we did this exact same presentation at the city council meeting, and it seemed fairly well-received there, so.
Anything else?
Thank you for coming up this evening and making the presentation, and obviously, our local community development corp had made presentations on predatory lending and the impact it's having on our local community. And I think, looking at, as you say, sort of market-driven alternatives that, as opposed to getting the city to try to regulate it, this is a nice option to have and have available, and I appreciate your sharing it with us.
Great, thank you so much, and we work very closely with Mike Stone at Waco CDC and his staff and their alliance on fair lending. Great, thank you. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, a thought just occurred to me, and I... The city of Waco and WISD are not the only employers in this city that might be interested in these kinds of services for their employees. I'm just, how does it spread from, I mean, to smaller employers? Is there opportunities for...
Absolutely.
How can they piggyback on what, I guess, the larger organizations are going to bring to town?
We are in a slow-growth pattern here in Waco, to be honest. We're making presentations at a number of the larger employers, want to bring them on first. As word gets out and others want to join, they would contact us, and we can bring on a company of any size. Size isn't the issue, really, it's time and resources. Our goal is not to be the permanent lender here. Our goal is to be the interim lender until Goodwill Industries becomes the local lender, hopefully within the next year. Transfer all of the assets over to them, transfer the intellectual property over to them, and then let them grow it at their own pace, as they have the assets available to grow it. So we would like to kick this off for them in a reasonable and responsible way here and start lending successfully in Waco while they're getting set up to be a licensed lender under the state of Texas.
Okay. Well, like after, in, that's a little more complicated than I was ready to think about at the moment.
But the answer is, is that there's no...
Okay, well, just for instance, I mean, you've had the program in place in Brownsville for a number of years, and I'm just, are smaller employers around the larger ones starting, are they training individuals, say, in HR in their organization to, what, operate your software?
Right.
And how to initiate those loans?
So the way it works is that the, once the employee applies for a loan online, they click submit. That generates an employment verification email back to the employer, so there's someone designated at the business. They receive an email, and they would go onto our software system, you know, log in. They would check, yes, Bob Smith works here, he has worked here for more than three months. Yes, the salary that he claims on the application is correct, and hits verify. That then triggers a notice for us to fund that loan, and then it sends another notice back to the employer to set up payroll deduction. And then, that's really the extent of the employer's involvement.
Okay. I mean, it sounds simple, but I, and I'm sure it is. I just, I just wonder if it's actually happening where it's available? If the smaller employers are able to and are, not only are they able to, but are they participating?
Yeah, I think so, but not, certainly not at the volume of the larger employers, mainly because our typical pickup right now is about one and a half to two percent of eligible borrowers. So if, for every company that we bring on with 100 employees, we're likely to make one to two loans a month to employees of that company. So that's our typical monthly pickup right now. So out of 30,000 eligible borrowers, we're making about 300 loans across the system right now. There's a spike when companies first join. We get a much higher pickup, five to seven percent in the first couple of months, and then it goes down.
So it is available as part of your employee benefits package?
Absolutely, yes.
Do you have one more question, please? You too. I'm done.
You can come back later.
This may be drilling down too far, but when you mentioned that process, when the online application is made, in this day and time, how can you determine who's on the other end of the application? And are they offering up a release of this information that goes back into the system?
Right. In our intake form, there's either going to be some kind of verification, an employee number, social security number. There's also a photo ID number that's tied to that, something that the HR department would have on file.
Okay. So the security aspect and the release of information aspect is covered in full detail?
It is.
Okay.
Correct. And there's, there are disclosure forms as part of the loan package that the borrower signs to disclose that back to the employer.
Thanks. Great. Anything else?
Well, Mr. President, I know it's not an action item, it was a report, but I was just wondering if I could get the nod from the board to go further with this and maybe come back with a recommendation of some sort, or not, depending on what we find out.
So you're almost asking the board to make a decision during a televised meeting?
I'm asking you, as board president!
I, I, I mean, I, yes, I would encourage the administration to continue to move forward, and let's have a full presentation to present to the board, and we'll take action.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it very much. All right. Last item, 11B Grants Management Department Annual Report. Dr. King?
Yes, sir, we're always very proud to make this presentation, because I would put the Waco ISD Grants Management Department toe-to-toe with any grants management department anywhere. I mean, it's just, they're just excellent. They have a screening device so that we don't necessarily spend a lot of time applying for grants whenever we hardly qualify for it. They look at time and effort, and so we're very sleek, and we spend a lot of time on grants that bring in a lot of money, as opposed to spending a lot of time on filling out a grant that may just bring in $200. So this is our report for the 2014 school year, and I would be happy to answer any questions the board may have about any particular grant or the report in general.
Any questions from the board?
Dr. King, I, first, please extend our congratulations to that department. I mean, in terms of, I mean, last year was impressive when they brought in $3.3 million, but this year, bringing an additional 2.4, and where they're bringing in almost $5.8 million into this district is...
Y'all bragged on them last year, and that's what happened, they...
And I think, you know, continue to have them searching for grants that are available to bring in those dollars that we can spend on our campuses and really address the needs of our students. As a follow-up to that, the report on the TIPS grant, which I know we have at JH Heinz...
Thirteen, one million, 300,895 dollars, right, Heinz alone.
And then, you've also got it at Indian Spring.
One million, 868,885.
And then, in looking at that, I mean, there are things they're able to do on those campuses, additional staff to address the most disruptive social and emotional behaviors at JH Heinz, their additional staffing that you're able to make available at Indian Spring.
Yes, sir.
And I guess, to a certain extent, and I think last week, you may have indicated that one of those campuses was even looking at bringing in mental health or health professionals to address some of the other needs of our students.
Yeah, no, I know money doesn't solve everything, but it sure does provide a lot of services that, when you have a high-poverty district like we have, when you have this extra money at a campus, it's things like Heinz and Indian Spring, they can offer a longer school day with a lot more physical activity built in. We can put extra behavior aids on that campus, which helps with getting those students' behaviors in line. At Heinz alone, I know there's two social workers. Can you imagine having two social workers on every campus? The mental health aspect that I mentioned last week, Mr. Hall is working with Clarice House, and we're really on the verge of making this actually happen at Heinz, that a school would have within it a center that parents and families come in, the kids can go in there during the day to work with those behavior issues and raising children issues, so that our kids can be more successful and our families can be more successful. Next, we'll be talking with Dr. Gertz at the Family Health Center, because what if we use some of that extra money that we have for those campuses because of the TIPS grant to put in a nurse practitioner who can write prescriptions, who can deal with kids who can't take their meds? Training programs for parents?
And that's, and that's...
All because of the TIPS grant.
Grants, and again, the department's done a great job, and that's amazing that they're on those two campuses, but to the extent we've got over 25 campuses, and a lot of them have a very similar student population.
Yes, sir.
And I would encourage the administration, over the next month, as we're working on the budget, to talk to our campuses and see what all our campuses need to that end. I mean, I think we have spent a lot of time working on the instructional side of things over the last three or four years. But I think there's another component that we need to focus on if we're really going to take this district to the next level, and that is the needs of the students, things like the health needs and the social workers on campuses and those things...
Problem-solving skills.
That, if there's a way to expand that and to put it on all our campuses, and I don't know that a grant will do that, but looking at ways to fund those sorts of services on all our campuses, that's the sort of big outside-the-box thinking that's going to allow us to take this district to the next level, because it's not just the teachers standing in the power zone. It's not just doing lesson plans. It's addressing the needs of those students so that they're able to hear and process and retain information, and if we can do something in terms of allocating dollars to make that happen, and to make that happen across the district, I'd encourage the administration to continue to look at those options.
Our teachers work so hard, and they give us, I know this sounds trite, 110%, but just go on our campuses. They are working so hard, but they need help in the areas that Mr. Hall and Dr. Jenkins are able to provide through the TIPS grant to have the behavior aids. I mean, how many people have come up here, the principals and teachers and parents, and said, "Thank you, thank you, thank you." We are now able to work with it. It's manpower, it's having someone there to help solve those problems of poverty. And that mental health center, I think it's just going to be such a game-changer at that school, and I thank you and the board for, we would be happy, I mean, our teacher, now you know, the list will be, but there will all be things that aren't for teachers, they're for teachers to help change this environment.
I don't speak for the board, and I know we've got a lot of tough decisions on the budget, but if those dollars are going to the campuses, not more administrators administering the program, but manpower and resources allocated to those campuses to address those sorts of issues, I will, I think everybody on this board would be supportive of those efforts. I mean, that's, that's the piece that I think we've really got to focus on.
Mr. President?
Ms. Teague?
I was just, a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank Dr. King for having the foresight to create the Grants Management Department. I know that that was one of the first things you recommended to us, and you said it would be well worth our investment, and it certainly has been. And second of all, I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that there are serious school funding inequity issues.
Yes, yes.
And while we're very grateful for the great Grants Management and that we're getting these grants from the state to address these high needs, it'd be very helpful if the state was funding us equitably. But when we're getting less per student than surrounding districts, when we have needs here that other districts do not have, especially on the scale, it really, we can't lose sight of that issue, and the fact that that school finance litigation's still going on, we're still a party of it, we're still supportive of it.
How many years has it been going on?
Right. So I just want to make sure people understand that, yes, we're very grateful for the grant funding. Thank you for getting the staff in place to get it for us, but if we could just get more equitable funding from the state, then maybe we'd be able to take care of more the needs we have.
Absolutely.
If we could get the list, and community people come up to me and say, what can we do to help? I mean, Baylor University, I can't tell you how many hours their kids and staff spent. I mean, this community wants to get behind our kids to help do everything that actually Prosper Waco, it's turned into Prosper Waco, because it is not just Waco ISD and the kids in the classroom, it is the financial insecurity, it is the health issue. That's one of the nurse practitioners, another example, not just for the student, but for the family as well.
I agree. Ms. Cordway?
I agree, Angela, there's, Ms. Teague, sorry. There's so much inequity in, yeah, in the district and finance, but I think it's a, There's so much inequity, yeah, in the district and finance, but I think it's a, it's almost a challenge to be innovative and creative and think outside the box, like what you were saying, Mr. President, the, to think outside the box, to think, how can we really provide services to students, and not kind of reinvent the wheel, but really see impact on each individual campus, and knowing that our district is a wide, varied district. There are many needs, and you're well aware of them, Dr. Kane. And so, how can we address each campus and their individual needs? I think we, it's time for creative, innovative, kind of, thinking outside of the box, as far as financing and as far as, you know, this grants. I agree, I think they're phenomenal, they're knocking, the grants department's knocking it out of the park, and, but I think, how can we create every department like that?
Well, Ms. Teakle's right, I mean, the grants are, a lot of times, startup or seed money to get the program going, but we, there's got to be a continuing source of revenue to make those programs continue to move forward, and addressing the inequities in school finance, or coming up with some mechanism where these sorts of programs can not only be put in place, but are then sustainable, and that's something we've got to continue to wrestle with.
And part of our turnover rate with teachers, because it's very typical in high-poverty districts to have a high turnover rate, because we're just, it's more, it takes more energy from teachers to work with that, so if we could give them some kind of assistance, Doc, they're able to do at Hines and at Indian Spring, that would help in so many areas with teacher turnover rate, with student progress, because it's a, it's, you're right, it's not a direct instruction issue. The behavior aids, I think, was the best example of the difference. When Ms. Teakle said that night to Mr. Love, well, let's go ahead and give him that extra, and I thought he was going to cry. Really? And then, look what they've done with those behavior aids, and what a difference that's made, and if we, so, yes, thank, let me, we'll get principals together, we'll get teachers together, we'll probably put, like, in elementary and middle school, because the needs are so different.
I agree.
But it will be lists of things that would be directly on campuses, like the Hines, different programs.
Just, if we can begin to gather that information and find out what those needs are, and begin to see if there's a way to address it, that would be, I mean, Ms. Sykes?
Yeah, in that process, sustainability and what these address, talking in terms of the funding mechanisms and the need at multiple campuses, you know, the critical success factors, are those something as we look forward down the road that we can measure, modify, and produce additional results that expand the foundation here?
You would see it through attendance rate, improved attendance rates, reduced dropout rates, higher instructional performance. I think it would also, you know, lead into the family. I mean, when I say the parent training programs, you know, part of it is not just the parenting skills, but how to support yourself and your family, which means how to be a better worker, which helps the community as well, and it helps us because the student's being supported better at home. So, we have these parent training programs that are today's parent training programs, not the ones that used to be, that we'd have a PTA meeting, and the parents who came would be people like y'all, who are already doing those things. It would be recognizing what would it take to get the parents who really need to be there, and that means childcare and those kinds of things, for the younger children, and we know so much more about people who live in poverty and what they need to break that cycle, that if we had some more resources, we would be able to impact that.
But I think, Alan, and I agree with everything you've said, and I think Alan's right, too, that it's not just coming up with a plan and where we're going to spend money, but having specific goals, measurable goals, so that we can then, you know, go to the community, go to foundations and say, with this, we moved the needle this far in this area, and having those very specific, and that's one of the things that's driven the Prosper Waco initiative. You know, you had all those groups meeting, identifying very specific goals that are, you know, identified, measurable, percentage increases they're going to represent to the community they're going to achieve over the next five years. And I think that sort of specificity, where we say, here's what we believe we can do, I think, in long, that would be the sort of package that I think I'd...
Discipline, I mean, Sal does such a good job, and we already have such a history with our discipline records. One good thing about PIMS is, where everybody's labeling the behavior the same, so you can now compare, and we have a baseline of three or four years to show, because I think behavior is one of those major things that we address, which actually is, the behavior aids have shown us, it's amazing when there's an adult who has the time to say, and we're going to the restorative justice, as opposed to the punitive justice, and it's just all working together.
Having that adult that makes that connection.
Again, it's the resources.
I'm usually the stickler for staying on the agenda, because I know it's the board president that always goes to, so, we have gotten probably a little far afield from grants, we're talking about more budgets, but, no, it's my fault, I'm the one who opened the Pandora's Box, but I do think those are sorts of discussions that I would encourage the administration and the district to have with campuses in the coming months.
Done.
All right, and with that, I'm assuming nobody's watching on TV and doesn't know how far we deviated from the agenda, are there any other announcements, Dr. Kane?
Yes, sir. With pleasure, Mr. President. We received some very exciting news this week. Jared Nazarian, a math teacher at Cesar Chavez Middle School, has been named Region 12 Secondary Teacher of the Year. That means he is tops among the 90-plus schools in the 12 counties that are served by Region 12 Education Service Center. Jared now advances to the state competition. The Texas Teacher of the Year will be announced October 16th, and we wish Jared the best of luck, and we have our fingers crossed, and we're pretty confident, because he is that good. The Waco Independent School District Department of Advanced Academics is offering a free ACT preparation course to help juniors and seniors get ready for the upcoming college entrance exam. The 20-hour course will be offered from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on August 3rd, 5th, 10th, 12th, and 14th. August 3rd, 5th, 10th, 12th, and 14th. For more information about this wonderful opportunity, visit wacoist.org-testprep or Registration for the 2015 school year begins Monday, July 27th. I know, it just seems like we were just, they walked across the stage, and we said, "Good luck to young Zakowski", and we're registering for school. Parents of returning students may register online or at their child's school. Parents of students who are new to the district must register in person at their child's school. For details about Waco ISD registration, visit our website and click on the registration banner at the top of the homepage. And finally, the Fourth Annual Waco ISD Family Fest will be held Saturday, August 8th, at both University High and Waco High. The event is a great way for students and parents to get the new school year off to a great start. There will be vision and dental screening. This is another example of something we do that's extra, that helps us and helps our students. We have vision screening, dental screening, blood pressure, cholesterol checks, an immunization clinic, and much, much more. And that's Waco ISD Family Fest, Saturday, August. If you're in the university feeder chain, you would go to University High, if you're at the Waco High feeder pattern, you go to Waco High, the fun begins at 9:00 AM.
Very good. And I heard folks down there saying they didn't think we went too far afield, and I appreciate that, because I think, I think we were, as long as everybody's comfortable, we were on topic, that's good.
Okay, well, then it's official.
Thank you, I feel better. All right, any other announcements?
No, sir.
All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second? All those in favor, we're adjourned.
Thank you, sir.